Good afternoon, everyone. The mission statement for the Lake Mills Area School District is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunity. Has the meeting been properly posted?
It was posted on the district website, at the Lake Mills Post Office, and submitted to the Lake Mills Leader.
With that, and being at 4:30, I will call the meeting to order and request a roll call for attendance.
Brianna Beslik.
Here.
Ken Imers.
Here.
Andrea Graham.
Here.
Kirk Lund.
Here.
Amy Litcher.
Here. Are there any agenda revisions?
I'll move the board, approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second the motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Ken Imers.
Aye.
Andrea Graham.
Aye.
Kirk Lund.
Aye.
Brianna Beslik.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye.
Now, with the board report, we'll turn it over to Tanya, and I'm guessing she'll turn it over to Rob for the presentation of the survey results.
Yes, I wanted to start out by thanking the CAT team members that are in attendance here, and just as a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and will be up on the city website as far, and also livestreamed out to our cable TV channels for those that would want to watch it again, or that couldn't be here in person. So, we have Rob Demuse from School Perceptions here virtually to walk through the results of the facility survey, and especially for the CAT team members in attendance, we wanted to encourage you that if you have any clarifying questions to ask of Rob as far as the survey results, that this would be the time to ask him, because he will not be in person at our next CAT team meeting. We won't get down to far as like, well, what do we do now, or what should we do about this? That's what you'll be doing at the next CAT team meeting, but if you, like, Rob is a statistical expert when it comes to this, so be sure, we'll have Amy call you up if you have questions up to the podium, and ask questions through the mics for the people that are being, that are out in our virtual audience. So with that, Rob, are you online and ready to go?
I'm online and ready to go, but I don't know how I feel about my experts.
All right. I'll let you take it away then.
I'd rather have that bar be lowered a little bit, but you got a screen that looks like you hopefully here on two thirds for your presentations. I believe, as far as I know, you also have a paper copy of this in your hands, is that right? Did that make it to you?
Yes, there's a paper copy between the seats for anybody who didn't grab one.
Okay, great. So, let's hop in. Four color codes of slides, not all of which we'll spend the same amount of time on. We will spend the least amount of time on the blue slides, because that is nothing new. That will be everything that was in your survey, which is also repeated here. We've either taken screenshots or reproduced that text in your report. The yellow slides is where we'll begin in just a moment. That's the demographic information for your survey, where did they live, and so on. We'll spend the most amount of time in discussion, I'm sure, on green. That's the results and the analysis, and then leaving time at the end for wrap-up and questions. Obviously, I think you know who we are. We've worked together quite frequently a little last 10 years or so at School Perceptions. We've done this more than, or done this with more than 900 districts, you being one of them. So really, this is, this is not our first rodeo here. So let's get into the good stuff, which is related to you. Your survey closed a little under a month ago, May 6th, to be specific. You had a little over 1,100 respondents, and that's actually the most of any of the surveys you've done with us since 2012. So you set a new respondent record with an outstanding response rate. One quarter of the folks who took your survey responded, which means that based on your community size, your margin of error can get tighter and tighter. So with rounding here, I guess as we move forward, just kind of keep that 3% in the back of your mind. And it's got that pesky sign in front. Could go up, but it also could go down. So I'll revisit that number in a little bit, but bear in mind that that is a plus or minus margin of error. But overall, you got a lot of good start here in terms of your data and its ability to predict what might happen on election day. Who took your survey? I want to see a broken bell curve here, and I do. So what I want to see is in the middle, it doesn't surprise me that your 35 to 54 are a little overrepresented. That's going to encompass a lot of staff and parents, so that's not surprising to me. But I want to see your bell curve break at the top, because I want to make sure you're getting good representation from your 65-plus folks, and you are. Actually, within the boundaries of the Lake Mills Area School District, approximately 16.9% of your residents are 65-plus. Close to one quarter of your survey respondents are 65-plus. That's another good thing in terms of being able to predict an election's outcome, because they're such loyal voters. They will be there on Election Day, and that 65-plus is the most likely to be on a fixed income, because they're also the most likely to be retired. So we want to make sure we're hearing what that group thinks, and we are. So whatever you did to get the word out to folks that this thing was coming, job well done, because no matter who I am here, you heard the message. Is your primary residence in the district? Now, this could result in somebody getting the survey who doesn't live there for a couple of reasons. Obviously, you live in a very commutable area, so I could live in Madison, and I could commute to work in the Lake Mills Area School District. I'm a staff member, so I might get the survey emailed to me. Any parent who open and rolls into the district by definition doesn't live there, or they wouldn't need to open and roll in, might get the survey via email. But the message here is, yeah, we want to know what those people think, but at the end of the day, their influence is capped, because they cannot vote, and therefore cannot control an election within your district's boundaries. Therefore, we need to focus on the 91% of folks who can, which is why we asked that question, to make sure that we are focusing on just those folks that can vote within your district's boundaries. Which encompasses multiple municipalities, as you know, not simply the city of Lake Mills, but some of your outlying areas as well. The good news here is that you do have representation from every single municipality that in some way feeds taxes into the Lake Mills Area School District. These two questions actually get us to an important group. So first, we want to know how staff are feeling. That's the question on the left. We'll want to know how parents are feeling. That's the question that allows us to do so on the right. But then the no-no here as well. We want to know how folks that are not employed by you, and those that don't have a kiddo enrolled in one of your schools, how are they doing? So based on these two questions, are you employed by us? Do you have children, attending a child in school? It allows us to know how each of those three subgroups are feeling, and we're going to revisit those groups multiple times over the next few minutes. Here, we're on blue, so once again, we're going to spend the least amount of time on these, because this is what was in your survey. So as you know, you talked a little bit about the facility challenges, what the previous referendum did versus what you're looking at this time around, what some of those issues are. So as a survey respondent, before I'm willing to say whether I like something or not, I have to know what the problem is. What problem are you asking me to solve as a survey respondent? And some of those were laid out here. So whether it's outdated security systems, whether it's components of your HVAC units, the kitchen size, the gym space, down the line, what were some of those problems that you're looking to fix? Primarily, those were at the high school, but there were a couple of issues at the elementary school as well. And then, the potential solution here is, would respondents to our survey have the appetite to have the Lake Mills Area School District pursue a capital referendum, which is what our first green slide asked here? Should the district pursue a capital referendum to address the facility needs? And once again, we're only focusing on residents here, because they are the ones that enroll in election. Pulled together, six and 10 said yes. About 28% said no, and about 12% said they weren't yet sure. While that's helpful, we need to peel this data apart, because not all groups that feed into your survey respondents are the same size, and we're going to revisit this a couple of times over the next few minutes. So this is the same data, it's the same question, but now I've split it up into three component parts. So first, your staff residents are giving you permission to pursue a capital referendum to address those facilities. Just under nine and 10 said yes to this question. Parents overall, pretty supportive as well, about two-thirds said yes. We didn't reach majority support for non-parents, non-staff. And if you're new to this process, whenever I see those words, "non-parents, non-staff," or whenever I see purple, I always put my eyes there first, because the bulk of your community, the bulk of your survey respondents, the bulk of people that will be there on Election Day are encompassed in the purple. Why do we do it this way? Well, staff are intimately knowledgeable about what's going on at school, because they work there every day. They are also the ones that are most likely to be stopped at the gas station, at the grocery store, at the post office, and asked about what's going on at school. So absolutely want to know what they think, but there's just not that many of them. In any given community, about 1% are made up or so by staff. Parents are kind of in the middle, obviously deeply connected by nature of having kiddos enrolled at school, but most, and we'll get more specific about this in a little bit, but in general, between 70 to 80% of any given community are going to be non-parents, non-staff. 38% of the folks, of those folks, said, nope, I don't believe you should do so, and 15% said they're not sure. As I go over, over all of here, all the way over here to the right, you're going to see this on this slide, and you're going to see it on a couple of other slides coming up. For the most part, people have made up their minds, in terms of, you're not going to see a lot of undecided, you're not going to see a lot of not sure. So for better or worse, I think it's helpful to know that, in reality, I have seen these number, these numbers be quite a bit higher. I'm not necessarily blinking an eye to that point. If a quarter of non-parents, non-staff said they still weren't sure, that wouldn't have surprised me. So we're, we're looking at a pool of people that has seemed to make up their mind on yes or no about whether you should pursue this. If you do pursue, then as I turn the page in the survey, then I got to know what you're going to do. So at this point, to kind of understand the needs that you're trying to solve, what are you going to do about them? How much is it going to cost? And then most importantly, what is it going to cost me as a taxpayer if I decide to support this plan? So we talked about those projects at the high school. Again, we're on a blue slide here, so this is what was in your survey. A few of those projects at the middle school, a few of those projects either at the elementary school or throughout the district, and then what this would do to taxes. Not only overall, but what this would do to taxes, especially in conjunction with where you've been historically over the last, say, 10 to 12 years. So we want to get out the full number, which was 51.2 million as it was tested on the survey. That's the number that people are going to see on a ballot. So that's one number we want people to be aware of, but at the same time, that means absolutely nothing to me until I know what that's going to cost me. And that was $16 for every $100,000 worth of property value that I own at Lake Mills. And then we brought the data up in a similar way. So looking just at staff who live within the district, pretty similar data. 86% said yes to this plan. Parents, again, pretty similar. About two-thirds of parents, 68% specifically, said they would support that base plan. Once more for consistency, non-parents, non-staff are below majority. In fact, you're tied here between non-parents, non-staff in terms of that, those that said yes and those that said no. Course apiece, at 46%, with only 8% being undecided. Again, this is, this is fairly low. Had you been in the upper teens, even reaching 20 here, I wouldn't have batted an eye at that. So once again, I would say, for better or worse, you're getting very clear data in terms of the way people have made up their mind. But as you can kind of see here, as we kind of get into the, you're fairly evenly split, that's the message on the next slide. It reads, would you support that $51.2 million referendum to fund the base plan? So it's the same question, it's the same data, but you heard me say just a minute ago that not all of these groups are the same size. So parents come in at about a quarter of the community. So we have to weight their support at a quarter. So we put a .25 in front of parent support at 68%. Non-parents, non-staff are about 75, non-parents, non-staff are about three-quarters of your community, so we have to weight their support with a .75 in front, because there's more of them than parents. So when we do that, what this equation right here is telling us is, if you were to put this referendum on the ballot today, as it was described in the survey, we would expect 49.2% of your community to support it. At the same time, though, remember what that margin of error was. Just by nature of the size of your community, it's an uncontrollable factor. It's just based on, you know, how many respondents do you have in your pool? You have about plus or minus 3%. So 46 to 52 is the range that we're looking at here. Because you're crossing that 50% threshold, what this is telling us right now is, if this were on a ballot today, flip a coin. It is very, very tight. It is a coin flip to figure out which way this would go right now, it's too close to Why? So of those that said no, or definitely no, what is that reason? This is all residents put back together, so we first we pooled everyone, we'll split this apart in just a moment, but 78% said that it's, it's too expensive or the tax impact is too large. I would say that, as you can see here, just eyeballing this, you can see that that bar goes certainly out the farthest. Then I would say there's kind of a tier-two level of reasons, and those are kind of the chunk in the middle here. Everything from the gym, the middle school office, the bus barn, auditorium lighting and sound, the 4K classrooms, band and choir, outdoor areas for middle schoolers, and the middle school library, was kind of in your tier-two of between 41 and 53% of folks said that they're not supporting the referendum because of those reasons. And then you get down to the reasons where they really did garner a lot of, this is why I'm saying no. And I'm not necessarily surprised by these. Major building systems, the cafeteria and kitchen, expanding high school special education, improving security, those really don't float to the top in terms of why people are saying Did that data change based on how we split this up? The answer is not really. So this is our same now, three familiar constituent groups, your staff, your parents, and your non-parents, non-staff, and it's ordered in descending order by your purple folks, your non-parents, non-staff. When we split them out, the size of that project, that expensiveness, the tax impact, got even more prominent. Over eight and 10 of your non-parents, non-staff identified the cost as the reason that they can't support it. And then you kind of saw those familiar reasons that I just talked about in roughly the same order. You're looking at the gym, the middle school office, the bus barn, the middle school students, and the music areas. You're really not seeing a lot of no reasons from those groups for security, for special ed, for major building systems, and so on. And that pattern largely holds, no matter what group I'm looking at. And remember, I guess I would just say with a, with a word of caution here, all of your groups are represented here, but once again, it doesn't mean that there's the same number of people feeding each. If I go all the way back, you know, about 10% of your staff are not supportive of this project. So we're really looking at a fairly small group of staff members that are saying no here that are encapsulating. Doesn't mean they're not important, I absolutely wanted to represent them, but I just want to make the point again that not, even though all these bars are the same width, it doesn't mean that the same number of people is feeding each amount of this data. But takeaway here is, it really is coming down to that expensiveness or the tax impact, and then some of these specific projects, whether it's related to athletics, the middle school office, the bus barn, or really, the fewer students it touches, the more likely I am to say no to that project. So you already saw the base plan was too close to call, so this may be heading in a direction that you can already sniff out. What about some of these additional projects? One of which was the music area and the kitchen and cafeteria. That came in at 15.2 million. Staff, less supportive of this than the base plan. A little under two-thirds, about 16% said no. Parents, a little over majority said yes, 54% to 32% no. And your non-parents, non-staff, a little over one-third said yes, but a majority of the biggest chunk of your community is saying no to this project at 54%. So when we weight this, this is well outside the margin of error here. There is not support for this project at this time. You're hovering between 40 and 41% support if this were included on a ballot. One more, which was outdoor athletics at 6.7 million. Fairly similar to the same additional, or to the previous additional project for staff, 62% versus 16% no. Parents, again, very similar. 56% said yes, 34% said no. But your non-parents, non-staff did take a step down here in terms of support. Less than one-third were in favor of this. Nearly 60% said no, with 43% specifically in the definitely no camp. So this, this project took the step down as well. If this were included on a ballot, we would expect less than 36% of folks would support it for the outdoor athletics. Before we revisit this and sum up some of that data, I do want to revisit some of the other numbers that you captured in your survey, one of which being, how is the district doing in each of the following areas? Our scale here is 1 to 4. 1.00 being the worst score, 4.00 being the best score, so I got to be somewhere in there with a median of 2.5. The four items we measured here was, how are we doing in terms of delivering a high-quality education, keeping the public informed, managing funds appropriately, and building pride in the community. So some good news pieces here, every one of these is above the median of 2.5. That's excellent news. And at least 60% of your respondents are saying you're doing great or good on these metrics. One that I want to call out specifically that is really good news, I think, for you is managing funds appropriately. In general, on referendum surveys, it's not uncommon to see that fall below 50% or see it fall below the median of 2.50. Why? Because the average taxpayer doesn't think about referendums. They may not know how common they are. So people will scratch their heads and say, well, if, if you need a referendum, you must not be managing your funds appropriately, or you wouldn't need my help. Because people that don't think about this every day, and why should they? It's not their life, they just don't know how common maybe referendums are. So the fact that you maintain a score here north of 50% and you're north of 2.5, I don't want to minimize that point. And you're also above good and getting in the great category here for building pride and delivering a high-quality education. So even though you saw that some of these projects aren't necessarily going to be supported, and your base plan is very tight right now, I didn't want to minimize the good news that you're getting on this slide. Same thing here. This is the likelihood I am to recommend to, to a friend or family member. So overall, your score is 7.05. 5.00 is neutrality. So first, you're on the side of 5 that you want to be on. People are much more likely to recommend you than they are not. The other way to look at this, second way to look at this, is just by eyeballing. And certainly, you can see here, I don't know if you have a colored representation of these slides or not, but if you do, the, the greens up top, there's a lot more of those than there are the scary reds down at the bottom. The third way to look at this, I just do some simple math starting at the top. So about 1 in 5, 22% of your respondents specifically gave you a perfect score. If I take 22 and I added 13, I'm at 35%, add in another 18, I'm at 53%. Why do I do that? Well, I want to know that number, because the research behind this question suggests that those folks that give you an 8, a 9, or a 10 serve as ambassadors on the district's behalf. So they are the ones that will go out and talk well about you without you having to do anything about it. They are the ones that are going to stop their friends and family members who go to a different school, or live in a different school district, at a weekend softball tournament, or a weekend volleyball tournament, or what have you, or at the state tournament in lacrosse right, or state track meet in lacrosse right now, and say, hey, some really cool things are happening in Lake Mills. And you don't have to do anything to get 53% of your survey respondents to do so. And again, as we're looking at some of this data, I want to point out things that aren't always that common, and that's one of those things, and the fact that you had a score above 7. The other reason I want to point these things out is because these metrics of satisfaction are things that you kind of got to have in place before I'm willing to say yes to any kind of property tax increase as a resident. So the other way of saying that, if I back up a slide, if I'm not happy with the way you manage funds, if I feel like you never tell me anything, if I feel like you're not doing a good job of building pride in the community, it's very unlikely that I'm going to say, you know, I'm really not all that happy, but yeah, I'm going to give you more property taxes. It just doesn't work like that. These are some of the things that you have to have in place. These are hurdles that you got to clear before people are willing to say yes. So I don't want to minimize some of the good news that you're getting here. So in sum, before I take a sip of water, what have we learned? Well, one, of the projects tested, only the base plan approached majority support, which came in at 49.2%, when we weighted it appropriately based on how big the various groups were. Relatively then, because of that margin of error, if a referendum for the base plan were held today, the outcome would be too close to call. So what, what to think about next? Well, knowing where you are at 49.2, I think there's enough support to consider taking all plan to referendum in November and allowing voters to decide. What's on that question, I recognize is going to be a next step, maybe not necessarily tonight, but certainly over the next few weeks and months. Bear in mind that school districts are allowed two referendum questions per calendar year, so should you decide to break things up, as far as I know, you didn't have one in April, so you still have two on the docket that you could use for the calendar year 2024 before that clock resets on January 1. And I guess always bear in mind, I hate to state the obvious, but maybe it's worth repeating, in general, support from your residents will tend to increase when the total cost and the tax impact increases. Let me pause there and see what questions you have for the data.
And any questions that any of the audience members have, or any of the school board members have, please come up and speak to the mic to, to make sure Rob hears you, and we're, specific questions tonight about the specific data, or the data that's in the report, not where we're going to go, because that's going to be discussed, the, how we use this material, that's going to be discussed at this next CAT meeting, but specific questions on the data or the calculations for the data, so. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Barb Gebhardt, and I know you know I was going to have a question. I was at the last, two years ago, when I think it was School Perceptions presented the same data, and I remember whoever did it speaking quite lengthy about the undecided group of people. And what I remember, if I'm correct, is that they said that that undecided group, because of, they had done 10,000 of these surveys, always was more than just 50/50. And I don't remember the exact amount, but it, when you look at it, if the undecided group isn't 50/50, he, they said a couple years ago, it was always more towards a no. And I'm just wondering, whoever gave this report, is that correct?
Yeah, that was, that was me. Hi, I got it. So assuming I remember what I said, which is a dangerous place to be, but you're, you're right on a couple of fronts here. So two points about that. One, no matter what group I'm looking at, the undecideds, there's, there are very few of them. Again, I don't know if that's a good or bad thing, but there's really not that many folks, relatively speaking, that haven't yet made up their mind. Again, I, I wouldn't have been surprised at all had non-parents, non-staff, had 15, 20% of them been undecided to your base plan question. You have fewer than 1 in 10 that are undecided, so that that pool of folks is fairly small. What do they do until come Election Day? And I think that's your more pointed question. You're absolutely right. So had you asked me this question about five years ago, I would have told you that about two-thirds of your undecided folks break towards no, and about one-third break towards yes. Then, we studied a few more election cycles, and we put together a few more pieces in our dataset, and as we looked over the last few years, and I would say this is maybe like 2020 to 2022 or so, it went a little harder towards no. Then it looked like about 75% of the undecided folks broke towards no, about one-quarter broke towards yes. Then we're in a position, I would say, that the dataset is right now April 2023 and April 2024. How do we look now? We've actually been closer to our predictions, like between, in other words, between this number and what ultimately happens on Election Day, when we make a very conservative assumption and assume that no undecideds get pulled over. We've been closer on this number here, assuming that it breaks all towards no. Does that happen? No. There will be some folks of your undecideds that will break towards yes. However, there are also some of your folks that are in the yes camp that will break towards no. So there is some switching going on here, and it seems, though I guess the jury's still out until I get a few more elections under my belt and study this, it seems that those folks that will break undecided towards yes are going to be washed out by the folks that are in the yes camp now and change their mind towards no. Now, when and how that happens depends on what a community does. Sometimes there's a very voracious no group that rings, that bends a lot of ears. Sometimes it's the opposite. Sometimes there's a very vocal influential yes group that changes a lot of minds. But kind of saying, you know, as this data stands right now, it's a better and more conservative estimate to assume that when all is said and done, this is a closer number than pulling over X percent of the undecided.
Just to clarify, so Rob, to answer Barb's question, for your 49.2 number, you're assuming all undecideds go no.
I am, maybe this is a politician answer, I am assuming no undecideds break towards yes. So yes, I suppose that flip side of that is all.
That's what I meant, yes.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I'm wondering about the cost. Is it, is it typical that is the highest reason why people vote no? Is that always at the top?
Yes, 100%.
Okay. So why do you not put a question on there, maybe that says, what's the threshold you're willing to tolerate? I'm just wondering about going forward, especially some of these safety things, and like, as we make our next decisions, like, how do we know what number would be pellable? we make our next decisions, like, how do we know what number would be palatable?
Yeah, so two answers about that. One, would have been a different survey strategy. And in that case, what happens is there is different chunks of projects that can self-sustain and can self-isolate on their own, so that you don't run into domino issues. And you approach people and you say, do you like this project? Yes or no? Do you like this project? Yes or no? Do you like this project? Yes or no? And you go through that maybe 6 to 12 times, and people will say, I like this, I don't like this. And then you'll get to a tax tolerance question that says, how much money would you be willing to support if the projects included were acceptable to you? Now, this didn't go that way. It sounds like when I was at that CAT meeting in March, that it sounded like there was a base set of needs that you were pursuing because you knew what needs were there. And I didn't disagree with that. In those types of surveys that ask people for specific projects, you see a lot of quitters. You see a lot of people start the survey and quit the survey because they scratch their heads and they say, I don't know. You tell me, you know, you give me a plan, I'll tell you whether I like it or not. So you get fewer respondents in those kinds of things. And not that that data is not valuable, it can be, but there's also no guarantee that what people prioritize are actually what you need, but you have to listen to the data. So people went ahead and say, I really want you to do the auditorium, and HVAC falls to the wayside because people think you did that before. You can't go back and say, well, you know, we do kind of got to do the HVAC stuff, but we can't do that, because then you're not listening to the data. And people are going to say, well, you already had your mind made up before you asked me, so why did you even ask? So it's a different survey strategy, and that is a different one that we did here. Now, to answer your question more pointedly, I think if I were you, the way I would use this data is say, okay, well, we know the number one reason is the tax impact is too large. Now, you're right, there isn't a number here that you can back up and say, okay, 30 million is the sweet spot where we cross 50%. Or is it 35, 15, 50.2? This survey data will not tell you that. So what you're going to have to do is back up and say, okay, are there, is there a base base, is there a base set of needs that we can get to where we take out some of these things that garner less support? And then it'd be up to you to decide, do we take some of these other pieces and put them in a second question? Do we not do that at all? Do we just have one question on the ballot? But you're right, the way this survey is set up here is it does not tell you where that sweet watermark is.
Bummer. Okay, thank you.
Rob, just a point of clarification. For the probably yeses and the probably nos, were those factored in at 100% to the yeses and nos, but then kind of thought about that they would wash each other out? Is that what you were saying before? In other words, when you give the how many said yes, you're including probably yes. And how many said no, probably no. Yet within those, there would seem to be a kind of a factor or weighting? Or is it that they're kind of washing each other out?
Ken, we just lost Rob. We got to, give us a second. We lost the connection. So Megan's trying to get him back on Zoom. It's probably the storm, I'm sure, with the internet.
Okay, yep. Did you see it?
No.
Okay.
You have to send another invite, just copy me.
Just click the same one. Click the same invite. Yep.
Recording in progress.
Is he here?
Present, right here.
Am I, I think I'm echoing, or maybe not.
Yeah, I'm not sure where we're getting the feed.
Whoever's got the Zoom on their laptop, make sure you turn down the audio.
Yep, I need it.
Otherwise, it shouldn't be.
Okay, Rob, can you hear us now again?
Loud and clear, yep.
Okay, thanks. All right, Ken was in the middle of asking you a question when we lost you, sorry.
Sure. Just a point of clarification, Rob. In the probably yeses and probably nos, are they factored into the, at 100% to the yeses and nos? Did you say they kind of wash each other out? Or how do you figure, if I said, how many will vote yes, probably yes isn't yes? And I was trying to see if there was any weighting here, or, you know, to the data for that.
No, no weighting. This tends to be, even though it does say probably, which is a definite qualifier on yes, it actually seems to be a bit more stable than asking the straightforward yes or no question. People are much more likely to tell you no, because they're like, well, I don't know, you know, how much is a gallon of gas going to cost me? How much is my grocery bill going to be come November? So they might be leaning towards support, which I definitely want to know. And they're much more likely to stay in the yes camp than if we were just to say yes flat out. I think that would be artificially deflating your data, because people just get scared and don't want to hold, don't beat the fire, not knowing what their economic conditions are going to be like. So we can pretty safely join together the definitely yeses and probably yeses. Those folks in the definitely camps on either end of the spectrum are pretty likely to stay there. But when I was talking about the wash, it doesn't mean that everybody probably yes is going to stay there. There will be a portion of folks that will probably come back and say, I do change my mind. And those will wash out the folks that changed their mind from undecided towards yes. I just don't have enough election cycles over the last two years to figure out what that new number is. Is it closer to 1/3 again? Is it 1/4? Or is it something in between or less than 1/4?
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board or from the people in the audience? Yeah, come on up.
I have two more questions. One, I know there were many spots where people could write comments, and I've talked to a lot of people who did write comments. Will we ever be able to see those comments? And several of the people who I spoke to, one of their main concerns, and they wrote this in the comments, was that they felt that not any of the challenges in the proposals that are in this were going to raise test scores. And that became apparent, that a lot of people were worried that the gym, removing the gym or these different things weren't going to raise test scores. So I'm just wondering if we, as a committee, will ever see any of the comments.
I don't know, Tanya, do you want me to address that? Do you want to address that? I'm happy to do so, but whatever's better.
Well, you would have the comments.
I do, that's correct.
Right.
I can access all of them. We also put together a comment theme analysis. So what that does is we basically approach each open-ended comment, and we say, well, what lessons are we learning from this group of qualitative data? And then we'll put that together for a couple of reasons. One, we're the third party, so we don't have to sugarcoat it. We'll tell you like it is, whether it's good or bad or indifferent. We'll tell you, even if something, you know, whether it's true or not, if it's a perception, we want to tell you, but we also want to balance confidentiality. So we do not use verbatim comments. I don't know who said what on purpose. I can't trace it back to anybody, nor can anybody who has access to the data. So instead, what we put together is a, from each section, what are some of the things that we've learned? You know, is it that, you know, I want to see more work done at the elementary school and not the high school, and here are the reasons why. I'm making that up. But basically, like, we'll provide you about five to six lessons that we have learned by studying that qualitative data by question. Did we send that over to you, Tanya, yet? Are we still?
I would have to look at that. I'm not sure.
But that's what you get from us. That way, you can look at the qualitative data without negating confidentiality.
Okay, well, that's great. Then we will get an idea of what some of the comments were.
I guess I just want to clarify that, that typically, if you're looking at anything that's going to pack student achievement, that would be more on an operational referendum side, where you're investing in additional staff programming, things like that, that this is a capital referendum campaign that's dedicated specifically to buildings. So if the community would want to support an operational referendum in order for us to add staff and improve programs, we are certainly in favor of that.
All right. So are there any additional questions for Rob to clarify the survey results, survey questions, data?
So you don't have your slides numbered, but the one, I guess the one where it has the reasons why people voted no, the ones in the third tier down, basically, those are ones that people support, would support, correct? The ones like in the 20s and 30s? Like, those are ones that people thought were important and weren't part of the reason why they voted no?
I would say yes and no. So they're not very likely to be the reason I voted no, or said no in this survey, basically. So in other words, a different way to say that is, I'm not necessarily against it because I don't want to improve security. I'm not necessarily against it because I don't support special education. It doesn't mean I would support the project. It just means that these reasons at the bottom are not the reasons why I would support it. They're not the reasons I'm telling you no. The reasons they're telling you no are the ones that have the heart.
Okay. So we're not going to equate that with, like, support for those projects?
I think you're 100% correct. It doesn't mean I'm supportive of it. It just means that that's not what's flipping the switch for me in from yes to no.
Okay. Is there anything else? Anyone have anything else? And again, Rob, I will not be at the CAT, next CAT meeting in a week and a half, so now is the time.
Is there any factoring or consideration towards some error rate, or, you know, people that might fill out the survey, but the answers aren't connecting? Or it might be that they might be confused? Or are we assuming everything is, every survey is correct in terms of the instructions?
Well, I can give you a rule of thumb. So many of our surveys are approached in a similar way. You know, I guess we try to write it from a very friendly academic level. We try to cut to the chase, and I think I mentioned this when I was at that CAT meeting, but I always use that quick trip rule. Is it the way I hear people talking when I stop and get coffee in Blazers at 6:00 AM at Quick Trip? If not, I don't really think it's a good way to talk in a survey. At the same time, you know, there are some elements of school finance that we try to educate on as opposed to beating around the bush. So a mill rate, for instance, nobody in the world thinks in terms of a mill rate, but we do want to address maybe what that would do, a project would do to a mill rate, and then translate that into, okay, so this is what it would do for my property. So I would say that your survey is not unlike other surveys that we've done either previously in Lake Mills or statewide. And we're right more often than not. So, and I don't say that to, you know, sound cocky. I say that to build confidence in the sense that what our reports say and what ultimately happens on election day matches about 94.5% of the time. We're not perfect, but over nine times in 10, our data here is highly predictive of what will happen on election day. And I don't have a reason to think differently about that here, based on the approach and the similarities that you have, either the Lake Mills in the past or on surveys that we've done over many years.
Thank you.
There's another question from Charlie.
Charlie Unz. Based on your data that you have on the screen right now, where it says too expensive tax impact, 78%, can you reference that if that tax impact was dropped, say, instead of 51 million down to 46 million? Would we be able to infer a lot of the same answers? Or would those answers change or not to make it pass more readily?
Yeah, so let me, I think you're definitely on to something there. So there are certainly psychological thresholds that people will cross. You know, 98 bucks per 100K of a tax impact is not four cents different than a buck or two. I mean, $1 is a psychological threshold that people cross. $2 is a psychological threshold that people cross. $10 per month might be a threshold that people cross. And here, you know, relatively speaking, at $16 for every $100,000 of property value, I can't speak to whether that's affordable for people, but I can say relative to other districts, that is quite affordable for the amount of money that you can invest. So I would say that you're right in the sense of, I don't want to put horns in your mouth, but I think it's more coming down to probably what this number is, and I'm highlighting that 51.2, than the 16, especially based on some of the previous projects that you've done in Lake Mills and previous projects that voters have supported. And I think, going back a minute, I think 50 million is one of those thresholds where 48 million sounds vastly different than 51.2. And so I think if you do back up and take out some of the bigger projects that you saw up here, and get to something that is more palatable, and I don't know what that threshold is, both on the tax impact and what the total number is, but I think, you know, if it's 46, like you said, or something below 50, I do think that that's very logical.
On the last slide, you have the next step. So you do say there is enough support to consider taking a plan to referendum. So what do you take into consideration to make that statement? Is it simply that with the margin of error, we go over 50%?
It's that, yeah. The fact that that confidence interval, that margin of error is crossing between, you know, if you were, if you were looking at 40% support, plus or minus 3%, I would say, well, there's really not support. You know, you're not crossing a 50% threshold. That could lead to one way or the other in your case, because the data is so tight. I think that what you're seeing here is there's an appetite to do something. It's just too close to tell whether that appetite is for what you proposed on the survey. So I do think that there is justification for the board to consider putting something on. But if I were a resident in Lake Mills, I would say, well, the majority, which is truthful, the majority of your survey respondents said no to this plan, so what's going to change? You know, what's different? Or how is what you take to ballot going to be different than what I saw here? And whether or not that's splitting the projects off into two questions, whether it's going with one question and making it cheaper? Those are kind of the next steps. But based on the amount of support you've accrued, I do think, and with that margin of error, plus or minus 3%, I do think you have justification to take something there. That was the reason for that.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anything else? Okay. All right. Thank you, Rob. Thank you. Very nice.
I have a meeting with Tanya tomorrow. So if you think of anything, she knows where to find me in less than 24 hours. So by all means, let me know. Be happy to take care of anything else if you think of something.
Thanks a lot, Rob. Appreciate it.
See ya. Bye-bye.
All right. I think that's all that, for the survey presentation and School Perceptions. And we will move on with the other items that are attached to this special meeting. And we will move on to discussion of, with possible action, on 3A, student dues and fees. So if you are not interested in the rest of the meeting, feel free to leave. You're more than welcome to stay, though, so.
All right. Hello. Okay, so I am bringing to you the student and due fee schedule. This is an annual approval document that we bring to the board every year. Most of it has stayed the same. We have an excess cash balance in our Fund 50, so our food service, so we did some analysis there. So we're recommending that we just keep the meal prices all the same for this next year. We also did that the year prior, so we haven't increased those in some time. There are a couple proposed, or a few proposed changes at the high school level for some courses. So I'll just kind of talk through what has been asked from some of the teachers that teach these courses, and then we can talk a little bit more about it if you'd like. One of them being the Construction 2 course. So the recommendation is increasing this from $30 to $50. And the reason for this ask is due to the fact that it's a dual-credit course with Madison College, and the project materials are expensive. They come to about $52 per student, so that really wouldn't even cover the whole fee, but it is quite the increase. So the students also are completing some additional projects in that course that are part of kind of what the building gives as their budget for those courses. So that is something that is being proposed. In addition to that, we have an Engineering 2 course. So this is the second year that we'll have this course. This is the first year we ran it. I have some numbers for how many students are in it, or signed up for these courses, so I can bring that out if you'd like. But it turns out that we didn't charge enough, or we had some expenses that went over what we had allotted for that course. So the ask there is to increase that by $15 as well. And then in addition to those two courses, the foods courses, so there's a series of courses here, Foods 1, 2, Baking's and Pastry, Advanced Baking's and Pastry, and the World's Cuisine courses. As I'm sure everyone knows, the cost of groceries are going up significantly. So our instructor Um, our, our instructor there has asked that we increase each of those courses by, um, a five dollars each. Um, to kind of make up for that inflation and, and some of the course expenses.
Right. Um, these are possible motions, um, so, or possible actions. So if the, any board member would like to. Discuss it further or would like to table it or, or after the discussion? Or would like to just include a motion in this meeting?
Just a comment that. Think it's. It's good that the bulk of the fees didn't change. This is the second year we've really done that. And really, uh, for both years, last year and this year, it's really just been factored from material cost. So to me, it looks like this. And I'm looking to you that these changes will affect a subset of students, but not a huge subset. Is that?
I think the one concern we do have is, and we're meeting with the high school counselors on this, is we don't want students to not take a class based on costs. We don't want that to be. Prohibitive, you know? I, I think that's not very equitable. I mean, with the culinary arts classes and the, the tech ed classes are such enriching classes. And we don't know if students might go into that career field. So we definitely. Don't want them to not take a class because of costs. So we are looking into other methods of, you know, whether it's. Applying for funds through United Way or Watertown Health Foundation or something like that to be able to have. Um, uh, some funds set aside for students that might not be able to financially afford to take those classes, whether they're on free or reduced lunch or something like that. So that they would still be able to take those classes.
I was gonna say, that was one of my questions. Um, so thanks for answering that and potentially looking at maybe community sponsors. Like if it's an engineering class and we've got some sort of business within the community who would. Love to partner with that student and then maybe internship in the shop. I think that would be, um, very valuable in, in both ways. Not being at the high school yet, do fun or do the fees for these, are they paid for upfront when families register?
Yes.
So all of the fees are taken out and collected. It's not like we have. Kids that were waiting still to collect fees on and kind of in limbo there and trying to collect fees, which is kind of maybe increasing cost a little bit. They all come out at the beginning.
So they, they're, um, put into their Skyward to be, to collect it in the beginning. There are times when people don't. And, you know, we monitor that and watch for it and send out invoices. But if we learn of a student that's struggling, we'll work with the counselors to see what we can do for those students. Because it happens. Um, so it's something that kind of on a case by case basis that we've had to address and it's been, and it's worked out. Fine that we've, you know, been able to take care of those costs.
Is there, would, 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 uh, any board members like to table it or would we like to have the proposed, proposed motion?
How the board approved the student dues and fees as presented?
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further questions or discussion? All right. Hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote on the motion.
Andrea Graham.
Aye.
Kirk Lund.
Aye.
Brianna Beslick.
Aye.
Ken Imers.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye. All right. Next up, school district website and communications. Uh, Tanya, if you'd like to present a little bit more.
Yeah, you know, especially in light of what, um, mostly Megan was trying to do with our website, um, with the facility. Discussions and the cat team, it becomes apparent very quickly that it, it's hard to communicate with our current website design. We're constantly looking at how other districts communicate, whether it's via the website or newsletters that they send out to the community and things like that. And, um, our website is about four, almost going on five years old and, and it just needs to be refreshed. So that led us to meet with different vendors and look at what types of platforms are available. And, um, I guess there's a couple of things. Our website with CMS for Schools does not allow for any creativity. And on the backend user side of it, it's very, very difficult to navigate. There's just a handful of us that use it and, and. Number one, it's just very hard to make any kind of changes. And you can see from our website, it's really, you can include links and pictures and documents. That's about it. So we started looking at a couple of other website companies about what they could do for us. Some of the features that we've seen with new websites now is. Um, kind of a backend integrated communication system. So for example, um, I'll use Snow Days. So when we, um, notify people, Snow Days. Will, I always say we, it's Megan. Megan will post on the, on the district website, schools closed and put on that banner. Then she will get parent communication ready to go. I'll get staff communication ready to go. She'll do the social media sites, whether it's Instagram, Facebook. We do a little bit on Twitter slash X. Yeah. The new systems have like a one-stop shop where you can put that notice in and it shoots it out to all of your different platforms. So saving time on the backend of things for us, but also allowing us to communicate with parents and staff more quickly and easily. Then the other thing I look at as well is I, I think Megan does an excellent job with our social media. I mean, great. Um, Facebook posts, a lot of information, a lot of celebrations. However, if you're not a Facebook user, you don't see that or an Instagram user. And then, as you know, sometimes Facebook's hit or miss, right? Sometimes you see the post, sometimes you don't. Once you see it, you move on in that whole thread. Well, if you've looked at other websites, you can see, um, basically the streaming where the Instagram or Facebook post stays right on that homepage. So if you're a, a new parent or a community member and you click on that website, you can see the news stories that maybe have been posted to the paper or. Things that are in our social media and kind of those celebrations and those great stories about the school districts stay live and active. Um, so, so being able to keep that more visible and I just think a better overall communication tool. So right now, um, you, CMS for Schools is a little. A little more cheap than the new website designs by about three thousand dollars a year. Um, or not actually not even quite that much. Um, I guess yearly, pretty comparable. Now that I look back at that, it would take a one-time fee. Um, to redo, you know, all the work that would be on the backend of, of whatever company that we choose. And that's pretty similar, about ten thousand dollars. Um, depending on whatever company you do. Um, it's not as much work on us to do it. In the old days, when you had to turn over your website, it was very. Intensive on the school side of things. We had to do all that work, but they, they don't do that anymore. So. We just thought, um, I know we're constantly working on how to communicate. And I think if we do decide that we are going to referendum. Again, I've talked with some of you out in the audience, it's hard, um, with, you know, turnover, um, with the leader for their different reporters. You know, it's been happening quite a bit. Um, not everybody subscribes to the paper. We do try to get news releases out as much as possible. And any kind of print newsletters are costly. That's why we try to do them, um, when we absolutely need them. We try to do, you know, two print newsletters a year. And then postcards where we really need to get information out because those are a little bit more cost effective. So. Just trying to figure out how to communicate with the public, um, in general, especially when we've got a pretty significant group of people that don't have kids. In the school district that we need to communicate with. So not that we're necessarily asking the board. Um, to take action on this because this is really the first formal time you're seeing this besides just my communication to you. But it's something we'd like to consider and the sooner we could move on this, the sooner we could have the website hopefully done by the start of the school year when we've talked to the companies. They said sometime in fall, we would be up and, and ready to go. Um, and this is something that we can't really do during the school year. We're way too busy during the school year to. Do a new website, but, um, just something for the board's consideration.
So can I ask, as the, um, notification system in Skylark, would that cost then? Be eliminated because we would use the new platform and not need that notification?
That is what I am thinking, but I don't know the answer for that, to that for sure. I think one thing I would be a little cautious about as we're getting the new notification system up. I would almost want a little bit of an overlap to make sure that if there was an emergency that the new system works. So I'd have to check into that. And, and actually, um, even just talk to some other, um, school districts who are using. One of these other two companies to see what they've done with, what they would recommend, if they would move away from that completely. Or if they're still using another notification system on top of that. So you're right, that is something I have been thinking about.
I would just say that communicate, or technology is always changing and improving. And so I think, you know, five years is a huge amount of time in the mindset of technology. So I think if there is a way that we can improve that, that's always great. Um, cost-wise, they seem to be relatively similar, but I would say it doesn't ever hurt to continue to dig in and learn and see what you can find.
And we could, you know, take you through some of the different websites. So we've been meeting with vendors, but, um. We've got some follow-up meetings with the vendors as well as far as digging into the real, real specifics of that. But from what we've seen. With either company, they're both probably head and shoulders above what we currently have. And I think are just very engaging.
Yeah, I'm supportive of us digging into this more. And I think just having an app is essential at this point. So.
Parents have the lunch menus, right? I mean, because everybody's operating off their phones. Well, if you go onto our website with your phone, you can see you're kind of trying to use the actual desktop version. And they said on both companies, the number one thing parents are looking for is the lunch menus. And so both of these websites actually have a specific, you know, app within the app can, like associated with the lunch menu. So as a parent, you could just pop right in. Access the lunch menus really easily for the day without having to dig through and drop down, you know, like we currently.
Like I do every night, Google LMASD lunch menu.
Well, and the other thing we've been looking at is, um, kind of easing up on how we register for rec programming. Cause right now, again, we've got, you know, a PDF of a booklet and it's very hard to register. So we'd like to change that into more of an interactive. Um, kind of rec programming by, um, event instead of like, you know, doing all the administrative work to do a booklet. So that, you know, you have, I guess you could have like youth soccer, you know, fall, you could have baseball, you could have adult yoga. And then it's like, you can click on that. It's got the timeframes from which they operate and you can directly register for the, the programming instead of going in. The way we have it. And those have apps as well.
Now, would both of these, um, potential proposals address the school calendar as well? I mean. Or is that part of the?
You mean like the sports calendar, like the R schools? Yeah, um, it, that, the R school calendar is a little trickier to get away from just because that's loaded in on our site. I don't know, Megan, if you remember, we didn't get quite into the weeds with that. But the R schools is a tricky thing because anytime, not just with the website, but when we've tried to work with. Even Nick on facility scheduling and tech scheduling, it's kind of a hurdle that we haven't been able to get past. But that, we can ask that specific question.
Okay. So if you don't need a form proposal from us, what, what?
I guess if, if you're willing to let us pursue that, we could bring a proposal and a recommendation back for the next board meeting. I mean, if you. Trust us to go and meet with the vendors, I mean, we'll get a formal quote from both. We have an idea in our mind. Who we'd like to go with, but then I'd almost like to do more of a, maybe a little more formal presentation to the board. Whether it's from this company or just letting them maybe share some of those enhancements with you so you can see what we're seeing.
Okay. That okay with everybody?
Yeah.
All right. Oh, go ahead, please.
Is, um, in the current budget, and we're not. Is the current cost factored into the budget right now? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and we're, we've gotten the renewal for this, which renews on July first, which is why we thought, okay, this would probably be a good time to switch.
All right. All right. Moving then on to, uh, the English language arts curriculum adoption. Turn it over to Erin.
Yeah, so you've heard, you know, a pretty lengthy, um, presentation from the staff at the elementary at the last meeting. Um, again, it kind of time is of the essence. Typically, if you do a curriculum adoption, you like to do that in March or April. Because vendors will promise you that they will get you the materials over the summer. Sometimes that happens. And then when you do get them, you'll get about sixty big boxes that need to be packed and sorted and things like that. So we'd like to. Get a head start on that. So Erin, I'll turn that over to you.
Thanks. Yeah, so I talked to you previously and Serena and Michelle and Nikki, they all present, presented what their thoughts were of the different resources. Um, since then, um, I can't enter the elementary school without someone stopping me to tell me how much they're enjoying. Um, one or more of the pieces of collaborative literacy, um, which is the program that we're bringing for adoption. Um, whether it was, for example, Deb Galstead saying like, it's really like. The reading part is just so engaging for kids. Or teachers who are using the phonics instruction and feeling like it, they're finally meeting a kid's need. Instead of that teaching to a whole. Ufly has been great. We have seen such huge gains. But we still have a segment of our students, right, that we weren't meeting. And now they're seeing like, teachers are seeing how they can meet those needs. So. Um, while, again, this was one of those last minute, uh, decisions to even try. Um, it has proven itself in a short amount of time. Um, teachers only had to pilot for three weeks and I don't know anyone who stopped. Um, that's how much the teachers, um, were supporting it. Um, other teachers picked up other components of the program that we weren't piloting and started using them. Um, they just felt very strongly about what they were seeing, um, in their classrooms. So I put together, uh, the rationale for you, um, that was LinkedIn Board Docs, um, provided you a cost analysis. Um, again, collaborative classroom or the Center for Collaborative Classroom is a nonprofit. And out of all of the resources that we looked at, this is actually the most affordable by over thirty thousand dollars. Um, which was surprising. I wasn't expecting that. And so, and as part of that number that I gave you, that included the materials as well as the professional development, which is a year-long plan that they provide. Um, I know you guys haven't had a ton of opportunities to ask questions. Um, Michelle came to be a cheerleader from the back, but I also know that if you have questions that she can answer, she'd be happy to come up here and help as well.
I could say, you know, I was just, as I was looking through the other, you know, curriculum that we were piloting, I was kind of saw like, eh, that, that's part is good. This part is not so good. I can say, um, this is probably the most authentic, um, use of literature that I've seen. And I think that's why the students are. Engaged and why the teachers are excited to teach that. So I, I was actually, being a former reading specialist personally. Um, kind of excited when I saw this come forward, like, okay, this looks more like authentic reading to me than what I've seen with some of the other, um, products.
I was gonna say, for those that weren't at the last meeting, we heard a lot about the kids and their excitement. And I think that that's huge and says a lot about a curriculum. Um, I was also going to echo the fact that the conversations I've heard from people were also very positive in what they were seeing with this. Um, and also to the sense, I was gonna ask you with the PD that would coming, be coming, would they have the same? Person or per people who were there originally? Because I heard a lot of good feedback, whoever came originally and just. The engagement and the knowledge and everything that they had just was great. They felt really passionate and really good about what they were. Being given and, and helped to learn.
Yeah. So Clary Kurtz, um, who is an educator out of Florida, actually, um, was the one who provided our professional development. And, um, the staff did respond very well to her. It was virtual and they still loved her and loved everything about it. Um, and she came for a visit in May and she, um, has signed on for all of our dates for next year, should we go forward.
And does this curriculum meet, I think you said it, it meets the requirements that was set forth in the legislature that we have to do it?
Yes, it does.
It, it does, but it's not on the reimbursement.
It's, yes, it's not in, it's not on the reimbursable list, but it is on DPI's list of it meets the Act twenty requirements.
And again, the reimbursement list won't met, your expectation is that.
It's very little.
Yeah, based on what we've seen with other reimbursement for literacy. It probably really wouldn't make a dent in anything.
No.
Okay.
All right. I was able to download some of the sample lessons and it just looks really teacher-friendly, which I think is so important with the inflammation of. Implementation of bridges and everything as well. Um, so hopefully less teacher time in that respect. And then I was wondering, are there online resources as well? So I know a lot of teachers put things on slides like, um, you know, learning outcomes or goals and.
So all of, yeah, so all of the student and teacher materials are online, but there are not pre-created slides.
Okay.
That is one thing that people asked about, but that's not something they provide.
Okay. Then are there any other questions? Hearing none, um, would we like to table this issue or we would like, would? Or we would like, would anyone like to propose a motion?
I'll move the board approve the adoption of the comprehensive K-five collaborative literacy curriculum.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote on the motion.
Kirk Lund.
Aye.
Brianna Beslik.
Aye.
Ken Imers.
Aye.
Andrea Graham.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye.
All right. Moving on to the official action items, the FFA land use agreement from Roger and Beth Wiedenfeld for use of the five-acre plot for FFA students at a cost of zero dollars. So thank you to them.
This is really a nice feature for the kids, FFA.
I'll move the board approve the FFA land use agreement with Roger and Beth Wiedenfeld, and thank them for their support of our FFA program and students.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote on the motion.
Brianna Beslik.
Aye.
Ken Imers.
Aye.
Andrea Graham.
Aye.
Kirk Lund.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye.
All right. Action item number, our last one before our closed session, personnel report.
I just want to make a quick note. If you looked at the personnel report earlier, we did make one slight change today. We thought we had hired a middle school counselor, and at the last minute, he took a position somewhere else in his home district. So we took that off, and we have that position reposted.
Okay.
I'll move the board approve the personnel report as presented.
Second. Any other discussion, questions? All right. Hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Ken Imers.
Aye.
Andrea Graham.
Aye.
Kirk Lund.
Aye.
Brianna Beslik.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye.
All right. We will ask for a roll call, or a motion on going to executive session.
I move the board adjourn to executive section according to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight-five, Part N1, Part NC, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, specifically administrator contracts and pay raises, middle manager pay raises, and recreation department staff.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. I'll ask for a roll call vote on the motion.
Andrea Graham.
Aye.
Kirk Lund.
Aye.
Brianna Beslik.
Aye.
Ken Imers.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye.
We are now in closed session.